Hi, welcome everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for November fifth, two thousand and twenty five. This meeting is being recorded, conducted in person and is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person at Five West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the Auburn Public School website. And the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no fan club tonight, there will be no citizens comments, so we'll move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have one recognition this evening. On Saturday, November first, the Rocket Band, Marching Band competed in the U.S. Bands Massachusetts and Rhode Island State Championships. They won best percussion and took second place in music proficiency. They also received a silver medal at the MICA State Championships on October twenty second. Congratulations on a great season. And I will tell you, we have a little band and it is mighty. They did a great job at the football games and it's really awesome to see how they've developed as a group. So we have a lot to be proud of there. They're really awesome.
Awesome. Well, that's great. Congrats to them. All right, I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes from October eighth and October twenty second.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from October eighth, two thousand and twenty five, and October twenty second, two thousand and twenty five.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we do not have student reps here tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Um, so I don't know if you want to do the first item on unfinished business this evening?
Yes. Yep, sure. Um, so at our last meeting, we had the two finalists for our, um, our school committee student member. And after we went through discussion, we chose Piper Doan. She is a junior from Auburn High School. Um, so we are excited to have her join us. Unfortunately, she's in soccer championship, or is the soccer playoff game tonight? So, um, she was very upset to not be able to attend, but she will be here next meeting. So we look forward to welcoming her.
I will tell you, Madam Chair, that she emailed me as well, full of apologies for not being here. She said she was, yes, yes. So I'm sure she's, she'll probably watch the recording to catch up.
Yeah, we're looking forward to having her, so. All right, great.
Uh, next item is a parking lot update. So I think if any of you have been by Swanson Road Intermediate School, they have made tremendous progress. Um, they did some tamping down. It's all filled in and waiting for paving. They're waiting for some few good days, so hopefully next week they're going to be able to pave. Um, might take a little bit of time after that to do the markings, but it should be done in short time. So, yes, all is well at Swanson Road. The swimming pool is now complete. So, yes, I want to thank Mr. Gregoire for all his work on all that. Um, it was, it really went exceedingly well, and I want to thank the town for their support with the CIP money as well, so, yeah.
Boy, that happened very quickly.
Very quickly.
Yeah.
Very quickly. They were ready to go, so.
Through the chair, I went one day to pick up my kid and there was a huge hole. And then the next day I was like, oh my God, what happened to the hole? She's like, they filled it in, Mom. And I'm like, but I was just here yesterday.
They brought in a lot of extra equipment to move things along. They too are worried about weather with the paving and want to get it done as soon as they can.
Yeah. Okay, great. Good. That's done.
All right. The next item are the cell phone survey results. So I do have it up on, uh, the projector for you as well. So as you know, um, back in June, we approved the one-year pilot of the cell phone policies and practices at Swiss, AMS, and AHS, um, that restricted the use of personal devices during the school day. Um, it, we also committed to conducting surveys three times during this school year to see how that was going. So this is the first of the three. We'll do the next one in, uh, mid-winter. So I did it by family, staff, and then students. So what are our families saying? So the first question, how do you feel about the no-cell phone policy? One is strongly support. Five is, I mean, one is strongly opposed, five is strongly support. So we have a lot of support from both middle school and high school families. I didn't survey the Swanson families, um, because really we don't have cell phones at Swanson Road or shouldn't anyway, so I left them out of all this. Um, the next question was, what do you see as the main benefits of the no-cell phone policy? Um, so there were some similarities between the high school and the middle school. The first one being improved focus and attention and engagement with the work. Um, families said that on both sides. Um, reduced distractions and increased social interactions. So, or, and it was all worded a little bit differently, right? Some came out as, you know, not less negative kind of things and others said more positive. But in general, the comments were, were common and similar in many ways. The next one is, what do you see as the main drawbacks? Clearly, this was communication and the ease of communication. Um, so not being able to contact their child directly if there was an emergency, if there was something happening at the school, that was the biggest thing that both families at both schools said. Um, so something that we can consider as we move forward. The next question, do you believe the no-cell phone policy has improved your child's focus and learning at school? Um, for Auburn High School, if it says significantly improved or somewhat improved, that's about sixty-three percent. At the middle school, forty-six percent. And I think that makes a lot of sense because at the middle school, they weren't, um, they weren't allowed to have them out and about anyway. They might have had them in their backpacks, so little bit of a different situation that they're changing to. And feel free to jump in if you have questions at any point or comments. The next question, how do you feel about student safety without access to cell phones during the school day? Um, in large part, around sixty-three percent at each school feel about the same as before. So I think we have to think about that. Um, you know, twenty-six percent, eighteen percent, I feel my child is less safe. And then with some, I feel my, some felt their child was safer, so. Um, that's not surprising either. That was one of the main concerns going into this pilot as well that people talked about. Uh, if you could change one thing about the cell phone policy, what would it be? Um, most are very satisfied and some look, um, for a bit more flexibility. So maybe some time at lunchtime that they could access it or that kind of thing. Um, at the middle school, prefer phones be kept off in backpacks rather than locked in lockers for accessibility and safety reasons. So, but again, it all kind of centered around, um, ease of communication, which I think we've all become so used to, right? That we can call or text whenever we want to. So it is a bit of an adjustment.
Through the chair, I will say, like, in recent weeks, I've had to call AMS and to reach my child about something, and I thought it was very easy. So I think that it's just, like you said, it's that previous ease of, I could have just texted them, where it takes an extra minute just to call and talk with one of the secretaries at AMS and say, I need to get my child a message.
Yeah.
But it would be the same with my daughter at Swiss who doesn't have a cellphone, where I would have to call the school anyway.
Yeah.
So it's the same.
I think it's just a different, it's a different mode and people are, we've just become, all of us, so dependent on just being able to communicate whenever we want. It certainly is an adjustment, you know? It certainly is a change. And then the last one, um, if you could change, and then the last one is really AMS only. Does your child have enough time to visit their locker during the school day? Thirty percent said, about thirty percent said yes, about thirty-seven percent said no, and about thirty-four percent said sometimes. So that's a work in process.
Definitely, I can see a trend.
Yeah.
The lockers are the issue.
Yeah. So now if we look at what our staff are saying.
Sorry, I have one, you have a question. Now, if we have a student who is dying to talk to their parent, can they go to the nurse's office and make a call or?
They can go to the main office.
The main office.
They wouldn't necessarily go to the nurse's office.
Okay. Cause I mean, some of them are sick, but it, making them go to the nurse's office, they're kind of forced to be with the nurse anyway, so. I mean, a lot of it, when my kids would call me or text me, it was about, I have a headache.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Through the chair, if I can say one thing, cause I have two that are at the high school level. And I really haven't seen much of a change because they can email me, just the same as they could texting, right on their iPad. So, um, if there's ever been an issue, I've gotten an email, the same way I, last year I would have gotten a text.
Yeah. It's just a change, I think.
Yeah.
And it's still early, but, um, okay, sorry. No, anything else before we go on to the staff?
Um, through the chair, if I can say one more thing. I think parents do forget, and I, the biggest concern I'm seeing with a lot of parents is the safety one. And I think that has to do with, obviously, the culture that's been going on with school shootings and things like that, and then wanting to be able to get ahold of the student or their student or their child calling them. And I think we also need to reiterate that it is in their backpack, especially at the high school level. If something were to happen, they do have their phone. They're not taken away. They're in that backpack, so they could, in an emergency in that case, absolutely get ahold of someone.
Yeah.
Through the chair, but that's only at the high school.
Yeah.
Only at the high school.
So I think maybe, I don't know if it was a major issue within the locker, you know? If we can maybe try a policy of, you know, keep it on your person if you, but then if you're caught, then there's a consequence, maybe? I don't know.
Through the chair, that opens up a really, like, as a middle school teacher, like, that the middle schoolers cannot control themselves with that. Like, it's on them and you're like, don't take it out. And they're like, ooh, how can I sneak it? Like, I'm telling you, it's not.
I don't, but I don't think all high, I don't think all middle schoolers are like that. I think we have our impulsive friends, but I do think there are also middle schoolers who, because I think they did do a good job at the middle school before with, um, cell phones. I don't think it was perfect, right? Yeah, but they just, they're not used to using them.
So it's, it seems like the lockers are an issue, so can we, what, you know, what do we do?
Let's go through all of this first and then we'll.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Rehash or whatever, okay.
All right, so staff. So again, how do you feel about the cell phone policy? Staff at both schools are very supportive. Um, how often do we observe students attempting to use their cell phones? Rarely was the overwhelming response, which is terrific, that it's rare. Uh, the next one, what are the benefits? Um, the top two were increased focus and reduced distractions at both, both schools, different order, but both schools. So that's a good thanks. Again, very similar kind of responses. Um, do you believe the policy has improved student focus and classroom behavior? So at the high school, it is either significantly or somewhat, that's a hundred percent.
Wow.
Of the responding staff said yes. And ninety-three percent, it either significantly or somewhat has improved student focus.
Wow.
So that's a, that's awesome. Um, how has it affected classroom management and your workload? Um, high school staff overwhelmingly, seventy-eight percent said that it has reduced the distractions. Um, and at the middle school, fifty-four percent it has reduced. And then the red is, um, that the workload's about the same. So a significant amount of improvement, right? But not, it hasn't made it any worse, right? So that's really what we were getting at. Um, what has your experience been in supporting the cell phone policy in your classroom? Um, at the high school, seventy-six percent say it's been easy to support this in my classroom and mostly, either easy or mostly manageable. And similarly, at the middle school, ninety percent it's been easy and a little bit that has said it's been mostly manageable. So again, right, that was a big concern, I think, with the cell phone committee going into it, that it was going to be a heavy load for the staff. Um, from a staff perspective, what changes or improvements, if any, would you recommend? Um, most support the policy and generally say that it's working. Um, some has say, you know, that kind of flexibility, right? Um, and to make sure that we have a protocol for students who need to contact their parents. So, you know, I, I don't, nothing way out of line from what we heard from families, I guess. It's about the same, so. Um, and then this one is, last question is just for the AMS staff. Do students have enough time to visit their lockers during their school day? Seventy-six percent said yes, and then there's a variety, um, of, of comments from the other twenty-five percent about, um, whether they do or they don't. And then interestingly, any, any comments on staff or questions about staff?
I'm glad it hasn't increased their workload.
Right, there too, right. Uh, and so our students, and interesting, this first paragraph is the complete opposite. Um, one being strongly opposed, Ellen, can you flick that?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah.
Strongly opposed and five being strongly support. So it's almost a complete opposite of what we saw with staff and with families, and I, I don't think that's surprising. Um, but then they say, what do you see as the main benefits of having no cell phones in school? You know, and at both schools, they talk about increased focus and productivity, less distractions, better focus, um, more social interactions, um, and fewer disruptions. So I think, you know, so they, they do see, they were, they were able to provide lots of responses about what the benefits were.
There you go.
What are the main drawbacks? Um, communication and safety. So again, students feel unable to contact parents, guardians, or coaches at the high school, primarily about rides, sports, and emergencies. And then, um, a lot of emergency and unsafe feelings at the middle school for those students with not having that easy access to their phones at all times. And I, I think all of the responses kind of tie together to some degree, right? Except the high school does say music helps them focus, but I do think they were trying to work on something with the iPads at the high school for that too, so.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Um, do you think the no-cell phone policy has improved student focus in class? Uh, many say that it has made no difference. Some, what's in the red, it has somewhat impacted student focus, so about forty-six, forty-four percent at each school. Um, there's a few that say it's made it worse, about ten percent at each school say that not having it has made it worse, so.
I wonder, the music thing might be something.
Maybe, maybe, yeah. And then, do you feel safer, less safe, or about the same without having access? A vast majority said they feel less safe. Now, interestingly, because at the high school, even though they don't have them out, they have them in, they can have them in their bag and with them. So I'm not sure if, I, I had to really think about if that was even a really good question because, um, I, right, if it's in your bag and if you had to pull it out, you could. I'm not sure why the, so many felt unsafe, but I guess, again, we've come so, become so used to it, like, just having it at the touch of our fingers, right? Whenever we wanted it, it's not in my back, it's like not in my back pocket. I might have to unzip my backpack, go in, find it. I'm really not sure.
I wonder how much of that one through the chair is psychological more than anything? Like, are they, it's like, so if I don't know where my phone is, sometimes I'm like, oh my God, where is it?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's what it is.
And then the next question, if you could change one thing about the cell phone policy, what would it be? At the high school, overwhelming support, um, but they want some limited, right? Like during lunch, activity, passing periods, and middle school as well. Um, that they should be allowed at lunch in the homeroom during free time, but not during class instruction, which I thought was interesting that that was really same saying. And then at the middle school, the lockers do come up again, frustrated with limited locker time and desire to carry backpacks instead of locking the phones away. Um, and again, this, the whole idea of communication and safety whenever they want it, and again, the music comes up. Uh, and the last one for the middle school students, where is there enough time to visit your locker? Fifty percent say no, fourteen say yes, thirty-four or thirty-five percent say sometimes. So the lockers do, um, come up again in each of those.
Through the chair, it's interesting, it's not opposite, but it's very different than what the teachers are seeing.
Correct. Correct. Um, so as a next step, I really feel in my next communication that I should share this same PowerPoint with all our families. Um, I think Mr. DeLongchamp can probably share it out through Schoology with all our students, um, so that everybody can see what came back this time. I know that in the last couple of weeks, I think there has been some minor adjustments at the middle school to how and when they access their lockers. So I'm curious if that will remedy some of the issues that we're seeing. I think, um, and certainly it's up to the board, but up to the committee. But I would be hesitant to make any changes just yet. I think it's still early, it's still October-ish that we did this. Let's see, again, we're gonna do this again, I want to think, maybe end of January, early February, and see where we sit. Um, but they did do some tweaking with access to, um, the lockers. And I think if, you know, what we hear is similar, then we make some changes. I just think it's too early to change things just yet because I think this is one of those things that it's a habit that you have to change. And so without knowing if it's really an issue or if it's just a change in their, what they've just become so used to, that's causing all of this, or if it really is problematic. Um, we certainly don't want this to be problematic for kids. I know, you know, this, part of this was, they started carrying their backpacks during COVID at the middle school, right? Um, and if you've been in the middle school, you know, I think the hallways are probably three feet too narrow. And so when you have all those kids in the hallways with all their backpacks, it creates another whole series of issues. But they also don't want kids having to carry every little thing with them separately to lunch. So they, they're recognizing that there are some challenges with it and they're trying to work through that. So I'd like to give them the opportunity, opportunity to do that and see where we land in, um, you know, late January, early February. But I, you know, I welcome your feedback.
Well, once this goes to the state level, they have no say at all, so.
They don't, but I will tell you that, um, Representative Frost's office reached out to me, um, in relation to the SNAP benefits and the cutoff of all that. So I was talking to a gentleman from Representative Frost's office, and I said to him, I said, well, but tell me where is the whole cellphone thing? Because it went through the Senate, but it hasn't gone through the House. And they said, well, it went through the Senate, but it hasn't gone through the House. And I, I followed up with an email and I said, you know, this is important to schools, you know? And I think we're doing the right thing, and I think our kids have stepped up in an amazing way with how they have followed through on this. Um, but to have that backing, that this is just what everyone does, takes a lot of the pressure away from everybody. So I didn't get a response, but I did ask. I don't know how far it's gotten at the House, honestly, which is shocking to me because the whole idea was, from my understanding, is that it would be in place for next school year, so. More to come, I guess.
Through the chair, I think maybe we just do, just because we're hearing it from students and we are hearing it from families, maybe similar locker investigation, um, around, how big of an issue was it when they carried their backpacks? Like, are we making this drastic change for something that wasn't a huge issue? Or were backpacks a huge issue at the middle school, um, before? I, you know, I don't know how many people from the middle school are on the cellphone committee, but maybe getting a better idea of, of, you know? I mean, there had to have been a reason why we kept backpacks for four years after the pandemic.
Four years after the pandemic?
Like, we never put them back in the lockers, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So what's the reasoning?
Yeah, I don't think it was that long, though, was it?
I can't do the math. I blocked that time.
It was more like maybe a year or maybe two, but, I mean, right now, we're four years out, you know what I mean? Like, from twenty-one, if my date's right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So my understanding was that a lot of the, um, I don't want to say altercations, cause it wasn't that, but there was a lot of jostling, unnecessary jostling, because the halls were so crowded. So that was a big reason for it.
And through the chair, I'll be honest, when my daughter went up to the middle school, I was shocked that they carry backpacks. Like, to me as a parent, that's concerning to me as a safety issue. Like, we don't know what kids have in their backpacks. And then equally, I put myself in the staff position, to me as a staff member, that's also equally concerning. When, when I taught during COVID and we had backpacks in the classroom, I mean, the tripping, I've tripped over backpacks. I had students trip over backpacks. There was not enough room in our classrooms for kids to move around. Um, I just, I never liked it, and so as soon as COVID was over, I know in my school, they asked, like, what is the first thing? What, what, what is something you need to change? I'm like, backpacks, get rid of them. Like, it's, I, I understand where students are coming from, that's something that, especially for like our kids who have been in the middle school for a year with it, that's what they're used to. But to me, as both a teacher and a parent, like, it makes me very nervous. Like, I, I did not like it when my daughter was in the middle school with backpacks. Like, it does make me very nervous.
Well, we have kids on the stairs too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just think maybe more information.
Yeah.
If we're hearing it that much. Um, or, I don't know, like, when I was in middle school, after every class, I was able to go to my locker. I don't know if that was the case before COVID and.
I think that some of what they're trying now is giving some flexibility, like, for one minute at the end of each block and a minute at the beginning of the next with time in between.
Yeah.
So some flexibility with teachers, I think that's what they're working on now to see if that alleviates some of the challenges, so.
Without allowing them extra time to horse around somehow.
Yeah.
Okay. Wow.
So again, is there any preference with when we redo this?
I think January's great.
I agree.
All right.
Everyone will have their new cell phones post holidays and they'll be like, I'll put them away.
They're gonna rub salt in the wound.
And are the watches still a problem?
Um, at the high school, they're still working on it, yeah. Most, mainly at the high school. I don't hear it so much at the middle school, but, and I don't want to say it's a problem. When they see them and they say to the student, you can't have that, they're not having big issues with kids arguing about it, but it is something that they continue to work on.
Next thing is gonna be the glasses that are coming.
Somebody was just saying that, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so this policy update, and Mrs. Stanek can answer your questions, but is related, so we had two when we were looking at the student activity, um, policies. This one was one that I think the committee didn't have so much of an issue with because it really is just, it's, it's our, the policy that we've had for a long time, adding about inactive student activities. So making sure that once a class moves on, if no one takes on, um, taking that money out to be used for class reunions later on, or whatever it might be, um, that we have that in place. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for?
It's just what's in red that's changed.
Nope. Looks good. All right. So go. That's an action, I think. Yeah. Intertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy update for J.J.F.'s student activity accounts as presented by the superintendent.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do we have a lot of accounts that are just hanging out?
Um, occasionally.
Yeah.
Uh, and then what happens is the, you know, then they realize that they graduated and they should have done something with it, and they're coming back to say, oh!
Oh, we want our.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's gotta be some kind of a process for that.
Yes, okay.
Four clubs that had gone inactive, you know, they might have started a cooking club and then it just falls out of, out of, you know, excitement, and then it's just kind of sitting there. They just want to be able to.
Yep.
All right.
Uh, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, if anyone's watching in the news, we've heard this over and over again. Um, it does seem as though some funding should be flowing at some point. Um, I didn't see any update today, so I don't know where that stands. Um, but as far as the, as far as Auburn Youth and Family Services, by all accounts, they have been gratefully overwhelmed with all kinds of donations. Not only, um, food items, but financially. Um, over a week ago, I, when I spoke with Sally, she said that they had collected over three thousand dollars just in money. So that's amazing, as Auburn always steps up to do. Um, and we are starting something in our cafeteria with share bins that'll be sorting things that, um, either, there'll be some families that we're gonna pack things up at the end of the week and send home with them, and then whatever is remaining will also go to Auburn Youth because she said she can take, as long as it's individually wrapped, even like leftover apples or carrots or like come in those wrapped packages, we can donate those and she has places to store those and she'll distribute. So, um, yeah, we're getting that up and going, so doing all that we can to, uh, support the over six hundred families of ours that are impacted by that.
Do we send food home with the family, like the kids?
Like dinners?
Yeah, just like, I don't know, snacks or whatever?
Well, everyone can get a, um, and so the middle schools always had, they've had a share bin for some time that's always empty because as soon as somebody puts something in it, somebody takes it. Um, so we're working on that, but we don't send home like meals per se like we did during COVID, um, because that has to be, you have to get the blessing of the state in order to do that. You can't just do that as a school district. Um, so if this had held on for longer, that they weren't going to fund it at all, I wondered if the state would come down and say that we could do that. Um, but it hasn't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
But we do encourage all kids, because breakfast and lunch are free. So take it, even if you don't eat it today, you can have it for a snack tomorrow or at the football practice.
That's kind of what I was getting at.
No, so we encourage them, yes. We encourage them to take everything they can for each of those meals, so. Uh, and actually, I mean, Brienne has talked about the participation has gone way, way up. So I think a lot of kids are benefiting from that.
All right, good.
Uh, so 'tis the season that we start to talk about the school year calendar for next year. So before I did that, cause in years past, once I present it, sometimes we go back and we have some questions, so I thought. So I thought I'd give you a few of the outlines based on our, based on our calendar this year, to see if there's anything you'd like us to consider as we put it together, so. Um, this September, Labor Day is not till September seventh, which is very late. Um, but due to the AEA contract, it says the school year can begin earlier than the Monday before, and thus the first day for teachers would be Monday, uh, uh, August thirty-first, so it's gonna be a long summer. And if we follow the pattern of what we have right now, then the first day for students would be that, so August thirty-first is a Monday. Students would begin on Wednesday, they would come Wednesday, Thursday, then they get Friday off, and then the Labor Day holiday. Um, oh, and I left out, oh, two, the next one is, um, in the past, one of the calendars we did, it had one professional development day before school started. Everybody hated it, cuz they thought we could spread those out, so there was really, we surveyed staff at that time and they really preferred two at the beginning. So again, that would be that Monday, the thirty-first, Tuesday, the first, and then September second being the first day for kids. They have to have four full professional development days per the AEA contract. We have surveyed families before about getting the full Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. If you recall, a couple of years ago, it was a half day. That was also something that our families said that they really liked. Um, and then we still have the five half-days that take place throughout the school year. Um, I, I don't know if it was last year or the year before that I gathered information from districts, um, you know, close to us. Um, and we were kind of in the middle of that range of the number of half-days. And then December twenty-fifth of, no, that's not twenty-twenty, oh yeah, it's twenty-twenty-six, oh boy, is a Friday. So following past practice, the winter break would start on Wednesday, the twenty-third, and school would resume on Monday, January fourth. So that gives like a full weekend, like a Wednesday to Friday, and then a whole following week, and then we would come back the following Monday. So not, not we, you. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else before we really start, you know, building a calendar, if there's anything else you'd wanna look at. I will say the one other funky thing next year that I didn't put on here is Veterans Day, next year will be on a Wednesday.
Oh, wow.
So this year it's Tuesday, so we have a half-day on Monday, right, for conferences, which is usually around when conferences fall, so I don't have a good answer for when. If we have a half-day on Tuesday and then everybody off on Wednesday? And I haven't run it by the leadership team yet either, so. Maybe I guess we see how it goes this year, cuz it'll be that this, this year, next year and the year after will be on a Thursday, right, so.
Through the chair, I'd be interested to see what the, with us starting so late, what the total number of days looks like.
Yeah, so um, if I looked at it roughly, I think the last day of school, given if we do all things like we're doing them this year, would be June twenty-first.
That's late.
Yeah. Yeah, that's late.
Just, just a question through the chair, like, does it make sense to go on the first week of school, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
You can't, the AEA contracts, they don't work that Friday.
Yeah.
Wow, and that's without snow days?
That's without snow days.
That's a rough, oh boy. Late year.
Let's hope no snow.
Right?
And you can't even come back early from the Christmas break because um, New Year's Day is Friday, so you can't, there's not any padding after that, you know what I mean, that you could make up a day after that.
What's, what's the state rule with going in, like, you can't go into July?
Can't go into July.
Yeah. Well, you got nine days, ten days.
And we know, I think it was before me, but the committee, um, didn't you shorten February vacation?
Yeah, they didn't like that.
No, that was not well received.
Not over well at all.
Did it stand for a couple of years, though, too?
It did.
I remember when the girls started school.
It was for the merge and then we tried to kinda carry it on and it.
It was when I came.
And I loved it.
What do you mean, no February vacation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty.
I do wonder, though, if you survey the staff and say.
No, that was, they didn't want it, they don't want that. Yeah, they like their February vacation.
Well, then, June twenty-first did it.
And I have asked in the past about, you know, asking if the AEA wanted to, but I've been told absolutely not on that either, changing like.
They're coming earlier?
Yeah, but.
Okay, well. Your summer starts July first.
Well, and the thing is, is I think even moving the professional, like, having three days of school, I don't know that it would matter, because they have four professional development days built in, so you have to put that day someplace.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not gonna, it doesn't really save a day.
Does, and it, and it says for full?
For full. Well, no, it says they work a hundred and eighty-four days, so that's, yeah.
I just wonder if you like, you figure out a way to get rid of two full days, you do the two full days at the beginning and do like two half-days and so you can still count those days?
I don't think the AEA contract would allow for that.
There's not much work over there.
And that's, no, that's contractually, I mean, that's, that, that's when we do the bulk of our professional development, too. And I will tell you, one year we had a professional development day after the last day of school, do you remember that?
That I was just thinking.
That wasn't good. That was not good. Number one, it was like ninety degrees. And number two, all the kids had gone home, and it was a full day after the kids went home, and it was, oh my goodness.
I would've called in.
No one was happy, no one was happy.
I mean, I have a couple of sick days left over.
Yeah, so.
Do we know what day of the week that June twenty-first is?
A Monday.
It's a Monday? Oh.
We're gonna have snow.
It'll be a Tuesday, Wednesday.
That's rough. I mean, I guess you could survey the staff and say, like, this is what you're up against.
I really shouldn't have, because I'm gonna be in that same position.
Even if you save a day and you get to the Friday, then you have a snow day, you're at the Monday.
Yeah, you're there anyway.
So many things that's.
I mean, if they wanna give up February vacation, though. But yeah. Alrighty. Well, at least they get a long summer this year.
Is there anything else you'd like me to consider before we actually put together a draft and I, I'll go through it with the leadership team, or?
I don't think there's anything we can consider.
I think families like the half-days on Fridays or whatever that is, like always before a holiday.
A way to get a day, though, if we did the half-day before Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that would keep us in that, assuming there's no snow.
There are some districts, it's not like every district does it.
Well, we always did. I think last year or the year before was the first year that we had the full day off. But I will tell you that we've gotten a lot of good feedback about that, that people appreciate it for travel purposes, that they like having a.
Full day. But I'm, I'm just saying for this year, if it's, you know.
I mean, do you wanna survey them and find out?
Sure.
I mean, you could ask them about that, you could throw out February vacation, see what they think. I don't know, it's probably a no, but, I don't know. I mean, or, or they're gonna be in school till June twenty-first and it's a Monday, or longer, yeah.
I think the day before Thanksgiving might be a.
And what do we do for Good Friday? Are we in on that day?
We're in on that day.
Yeah, we're in, yeah, that went away quite a few years ago, yeah. Okay, I'll put something out to staff and to families and we'll see what comes back.
Alright, oh, yikes.
Um, and then the last thing on here was just a reminder that Parent Teacher Conference is being held on November tenth for students pre-K to eight. Um, we have a half-day of school that day, um, nine through twelve has a full day that day, because they have their curriculum night on a separate time, so they have a full day of school. So just reminding families, if you don't have your appointment, reach out to the school and they'll still get you in.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to uh, Mr. Keller for the teaching and learning report.
Yes, tonight, I just wanted to give you a brief update on uh, what we're doing with our English learner program. Um, you may recall last year, I spoke to you about an audit that was being conducted from the state, from the Office of Language Acquisition. Um, so just a couple of quick things that we have been doing the past couple of years. First and foremost, um, I won't go into too much detail about um, what has happened at the federal and state level, but you know, beginning in nineteen seventy, laws uh, were passed down uh, around making sure that um, equal education for language minority students was provided in, in all school districts. Those, that was re-upped in No Child Left Behind in two thousand and one, and then Every Student Succeeds Act in two thousand and fifteen. So, um, we are required, and it makes great sense to make sure that our students um, who are, you know, language minority students are getting equal access to education. So, uh, one of the first things we did, actually last year, was the first year that we brought on this program called Elevation. It is an outstanding program, it, it is rare that you hear um, all positive reviews on a software program, but this is one of those rare occasions. Elevation uh, is both, um, it's a platform that allows for um, collecting data uh, on students and also um, gives us information that uh, is tailored to individual students. Um, so it, um, we, we can put all of our information on uh, um, compliance and paperwork, so we have to send out reports to families. Do you, your child has been identified as an English learner, do you want them to be in this English language program? Um, they have the option of opting out if they don't want it, uh, we can monitor their progress. Um, it stores and tracks um, our current English language students, as well as our former English language students, and we're required to track students who have essentially graduated from our English language program for so many years, uh, and keep tabs on them, uh, we're able to keep uh, test scores uh, and their EL status. In addition to that, um, there's professional development pieces as part of Elevation, um, and there's modules connected to uh, their data in the program. I'm just gonna go very quickly through some of the screens that um, you can see, so at a really quick, and we used to keep all, and we still do right now, but we used to keep all this stuff in a spreadsheet that would be organized by school and it would change on a regular basis. Um, and as you can imagine, with that much data and that many students, it's, it can get kinda messy. So this is what Elevation provides us. Uh, at a quick glance, we can see the number of L students we have, how many students are monitoring, I mentioned earlier, the former English language students that we're monitoring and making sure that they're still making progress. Uh, and then that bottom right-hand uh, square shows the different languages that um, our students uh, have listed as their primary language. Uh, the next screen just kinda shows you uh, test scores, so access is a score that we give to our English language students, and you can see um, a nice quick snapshot of um, different grade levels and where they took it. That's, this happens to show seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and how the students performed um, across the board. Uh, another big piece of um, of Elevation is the can-do uh, piece. It um, it, it goes along with WIDA, which is the organization that really, uh, it's a very strong organization around education for English language students. And a big piece of the can-do is, is we wanna make sure that we recognize what every learner brings to the table and not constantly talk about their deficits, right? But talk about their asset base, so looking at what they can do around cultural, linguistic, cognitive, and academic skills. And so each student has listed a can-do, so that we're recognizing what they are bringing to the classroom, not just what their deficits in English are. So that's a little bit on Elevation. Uh, and then the next piece I just wanna briefly talk to you about is a, a new textbook that we brought on. Um, so we piloted two textbooks last year. As you might imagine, um, having a textbook for students that are in a variety of different places, at a variety of different grade levels, right? You might have a, a second grader who's, who's just learning English, and you might also have a second grader who is further along in their acquisition of English. So finding the right resources for these students has been a challenge, and our English language teachers and our English language tutors have been doing an amazing job finding resources over the years that meet their, their needs. Um, and you have heard me in the past talk about this, the acronym HQIM, which is High Quality Instructional Materials, it's a big initiative from the state. Um, and so the Office of Language Acquisition is spending a lot of time and resource looking at what are some high-quality instructional materials for the teaching of English language to our non-native English speakers. So we looked at two programs that met that criteria and were able to pilot two of those programs, uh, and ultimately selected this program called English Three D. Uh, and so we have it um, K through twelve, and, and it's a little bit of a um, a process to figure out. Um, because, as I mentioned a moment ago, you might have a second grader that's in a very different place than another second grader, just depending on how long they've been um, learning English and acquiring it. So there's a lot of different resources that are kinda tailor-made for each student. But the feedback, um, just like with Elevation, the feedback from the tutors and the teachers has been overwhelmingly positive. They've provided us a lot of support, they being the organization, English Three D. Uh, we had two teachers go to a conference, this Kate Kinsella, Dr. Kate Kinsella is um, is a nationally recognized uh, leader in the English language, and she helped author this textbook. And so we had two teachers go to a conference and came back, and I got a lot of selfies with, with Dr. Kinsella about how excited they were to meet her and all the positive things she's doing and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our English learners, so. Uh, so this just kinda gives you a little span of, of, of the classes and what grade levels um, the textbooks go to. And then um, the, the program itself is designed to make sure that we're building concepts of language, analyzing text and using that academic language. Uh, students have the opportunity to actively listen and present their ideas and that they're also uh, writing. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is, um, the Three D component of this, um, what it stands for is discussing, describing, and debating is, is a part of all of the curriculum within uh, this program. So, um, this is our first year using it, like I said, we piloted it last year. Um, our teachers have the opportunity to use it in the summer program, um, and kinda get their feet with, feet wet with it. Um, and so, um, we met um, about two weeks ago as a department and um, just continued to move forward and, and make progress with implementing this curriculum, and people are really positive about it. So I think we've made some great strides in that area.
Awesome. Great, any questions for anyone? No? Just make sure I bring my giant magnifying glass next time. Like, look at all this open space on this paper, you could've.
Well, so, it was, it, that was a screenshot, because otherwise there was some identifying information in there, so.
Okay.
That's why, but I, no.
I can see a seventy-one and a twenty-nine, and that's it.
Through the chair, next time, Jesse, I have like four peers.
Oh.
I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Keller, for that, and we'll move on to business and financial.
Alright, so before you, I have shared with you a breakdown of Pitney Bowes leasing pricing for Auburn Middle School and Central Office postage meters. So, um, I don't know if you remember, but we have six postage meters, one in each building and here at Central Office. Uh, last year, I had asked for you to approve four of the six. Um, procurement laws require for me to get your approval in order to do a lease more, longer than three years. So if we do a sixty-month lease, we save more money. So we did do um, four of the six meters last year, and as you can see here, um, again, it would save us yearly three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents if we are able to do the sixty-month lease for Auburn Middle School and Auburn, uh, and Central Office.
Okay, seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Alright, any discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the sixty-month Pitney Bowes lease agreement for Auburn Middle School and Central Office postage meters as presented by the business manager as required by MGL thirty-B, twelve-B.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for researching and figuring that out.
And then I've provided you a listing of budget transfers dated November fifth, twenty twenty-five, between the same series and different series, for which I'm seeking your approval. Just a few items to um, add to our curriculum competitions for our high school students.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion pursuant to, I'm, sorry, to approve the list of transfers dated November fifth, twenty twenty-five, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
I would, I would down here.
Um, we do not need executive session tonight, so um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
I was like, this doesn't sound right.